All right, I'd like to call a July meeting of the Westonka School Board to order. Everybody please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Chair moves for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Carries. Announcements. August fourteenth, we have a Facilities Committee meeting, seven a.m. And August nineteenth is our next regular board meeting at six p.m. right here. Are there any members of the public to address the board tonight? I guess not. Move on to the Treasurer's Report, Bill.
Begin June's Treasury report with Mount American Legion Special Education Advisory Council, one thousand dollars. Hilltop PTA, Hilltop Primary School, three thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Shirley Hills PTA, Shirley Hills Primary School, five thousand three hundred and one dollars. Grandview PTA, Grandview Middle School, eight thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and nine cents. Anonymous, Mount Westonka High School, one hundred and ten dollars. Charities Aid Foundation, Mount Westonka High School, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Westonka Baseball Boosters, MW Baseball Team, ten thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Westonka Softball Boosters, MW Softball Team, four thousand dollars. Marty Fisher, Westonka Administration Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Black Bow giving fund, Captain's Club, twenty dollars. Special Olympics, Westonka Little Soccer Club, seventy-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And donations year-to-date for fiscal two thousand twenty-four are four hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I've looked at the check ledger and all seems to be in order.
Well, thank you very much. We'll move on to the Financial Report, Kathy.
Do you want your pen back?
No, actually, I keep it with me.
Okay.
Keep it for now.
It's a collector's service.
All right, I've had some technical difficulties tonight and Kevin recommended that I hit the easy button and just print. I'm not used to using paper. I probably am pretty paperless, but I have just a couple slides, obviously, the financial report and just a few notes on the back, so we'll use that method tonight. We are reporting activity through the end of June, financial records for revenue and expenditures. Revenue, we have collected ninety-four percent or thirty-six point one five eight million dollars. And again, this is through the end of the fiscal year, but keep in mind, this is kind of a soft number. We have not recorded any of our audit entries, the receivables. We have all those to book over the next month and a half before the audit. Expenditures, we have expended thirty-eight million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, or ninety-eight point three percent of our budget. And the same thing with expenses. It shows right now that we're slightly under budget, but we haven't done any chargebacks. We haven't accounted for the audit entries, including OPEB. And there's a few outstanding bills. There's items that trinkle in in July that, you know, an example would be utilities. We might get our utility bill next week for June charges, and so we'll look at that booked back. So again, we'll report on this again, June thirtieth data next month, and then again, just continue with the audit. So as of right now, things are trending as we would expect at this point pre-audit. Okay, and then on the back of the sheet, just a few notes. Most of our time is encompassing the audit activity, but we did get word that our audit, it's a little bit later this year. It's the first week of school, which I'm not sure how I feel about that, but we'll make that happen. It's September third through sixth, and they did notify us that the audit will be fully remote again this year, and that's been working really well. And the audit presentation will stay in place for our October board meeting. The Board Finance Committee meeting will meet earlier that morning to get a preview of the information. Otherwise, again, we're working on title applications, Mark Fenright and myself, and there was a very, very few COVID dollars that trickled in this year, and we're reconciling that last wave of COVID dollars to tie those out. So that's all I have to report. Any questions?
Maybe your title applications, what does that all entail?
Sure. We get a small amount of title dollars. Those are federal dollars. We have Title One, Title Two, and Title Four, and it's a very small pool of money in comparison to our state dollars. But it's a whole separate application that we need to apply, and it's basically to get additional help for students that are in need. Maybe not special ed, but on the brink of needing just some extra boost to get up to grade level. So we target our Shirley Hills building and the high school. Those are all funded in formulas based off of free reduced counts.
Okay, thank you. So we've got almost, according to this, almost three million in safe revenue still coming yet, is that? And that's, you're confident that's going to be there?
Yeah, it usually, it usually gets pretty close. As a rule of thumb, just the state alone, it's usually ninety-ten. We get ninety percent during the year, and then they hold ten percent. We have, you know, federal money to collect. Again, there's a lot of accounting transactions that need to happen yet, but we usually look for that number in June, at this time of the year, to be in the mid-nineties. So it's right.
I mean, usually you come in with about, within about five dollars, so the fact that you're two million, a million is, you know.
You're putting pressure on my mind.
Wouldn't you say, though, that you're from other past years where you said, no, you're within a percent of?
Exactly, yes.
Glad the printer was working. Hate to see you do this in longhand.
School, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report, Kevin.
We, today's agenda, just a little bit lighter, but the summer does not represent the summer's work. We've had a very engaging summer with, you're going to see at the end of this month, communication with our branding effort. And we will be sending out an email with a video description to our family staff of the new branding lockups. And then we're going to be presenting those to booster parents and parents at eligibility meetings, and to our coaches, and to families that are in community ed. We're going to be really working hard to communicate the style guide so that we have consistency with it. We're going to be reaching out to those that do apparel, that they have access and they understand the reasons behind what we're trying to approach. One thing with the branding effort for our public schools, it's kind of a slow release, because we're going to have our old brand still in places, and we're gradually going to sunset things. So when you look at uniforms, if you're just on a recent renewal, we're not going to throw good uniforms. We'll let them go through the cycle before they get it. For example, at the high school, one of the things that pushed us to do this branding effort was that we didn't have consistency with our brand. But the second thing is with the high school construction, there's so much of our physical brand on that building that it really made sense to do it now. Well, we're not going to put it up for a year and have it taken down. So for example, on the north entrance of the high school, you're going to see kind of our fonts and our style of our old brand that will stay there until the construction takes place. And so there are places where we can start introducing it, and so we've tried to prioritize those. You'll see on the back of the wall, we used to have the old logo. That's now painted over. That new one hopefully is up here for the August board meeting. There'll be a couple other places where you're gradually going to see it being incorporated. And I would guess for a school district like us, it's probably a three, two, four-year process, and then most of it's going to be pretty well incorporated. But it will take a few years to have it fully embedded. Really appreciate board members that were involved in this and also other people that gave us input. We're excited to launch it. Hiring, we've really proud of our teams that really focused on this as early as March. We really try to promote what we project to be positions that are open, as we know that people are often looking for jobs in spring, and so you want to get, you want to get a full pool to be able to take a selection from. And I think right now, we don't have teacher openings, and we're filling a lot of our other positions. So people have really worked hard to prioritize that, and I feel like we're sitting in a good position for July. And so I'm proud of their work, and I'm really excited about the staff that's coming in. With negotiations, you're going to see, and your action item today are the EOE. That's our admin assistance in our building. But we're in the process of negotiating with everybody in our district besides teachers. And so in the next months, you're going to see different agreements coming forth, and I appreciate board members' engagement and the finance committee's engagement of how we settle these contracts. When we look at contracts, we really, one, want to stay competitive in the marketplace, and we want to abide by our budget. And it's really trying to make those decisions. We know that to have quality employees to attract and retain, we have to be competitive in that marketplace. And yet, we also have to make sure that we're aligning with our budget. And so we try to show a lot of care, and that's worked well for us in the past. Construction, Shirley Hills and Hilltop with security measures, early learnings. So that is lockdown capability, it's door monitoring, it's the hardening of glass in areas. It's just some of the notification systems, security cameras are being installed, and so that's in process. We really feel good that the large majority of that will be done for the start of school. A couple of things, lead times on glass and other things, we're just paying attention. Once that's confirmed, we'll be able to better answer it. But overall, a lot of the work is moving forward, and it seems to be going, going well. Tennis courts will be starting next Monday, so the twenty-second. And we feel like we're still on the timeframe to have the courts ready late spring next year. Obviously, weather is a factor. June was really wet. We're having some drier days now, so hopefully that can be where we are going forward. But we're going to be excited to start that project. Doing a lot of design work with the high school in Grandview will be the next wave of the projects. And so with the high school, we're going through design and estimating and design and estimating and working through that process. Same with Grandview. And so it's, it's really exciting. And I'm, I'm excited for the designs of how we're able to make more safe and secure building, how we're able to right-size underside spaces, how we're going to be able to expand some of our vocational opportunities for our students. You look at what we're going to be able to do with students with special needs and mental health needs and just the pride of the building. It's just going to be really, really exciting, and we're going to be excited about this fall. We expect to be bidding out those projects, probably October, November is what we're earmarking. And then starting that, next spring will be the beginning of some of that work, and so that's coming up. In addition, we're, we're just really moving forward with the normal work of a summer. And our custodians have been working their way building to building. James Collins is our new Facilities Director. He's really had a nice beginning here at Westonka, and we're excited about him being here. Steve Crandall is going to be our Chief Engineer. That's going to work under James, and so he starts tomorrow. And we're excited about the partnership of those, those two individuals with that group. And then you can keep on going employee group to employee group, but it's the busy part of summer. July, July, it's kind of deceiving. You think maybe you have some time. And the longer you do this job, you know that July really is busy, and you better understand it's busy, because August is, is really fast. And so in your action items today, I would just highlight that you have a couple action items with long-term facility. And with that, we have to project out ten years. And then we're also a member of District 287. And so one is with 287, we are a member district with a number of districts and how we provide for their long-term facilities. And then with our own, we just kind of take an analysis of where our expenses have gone with maintenance and how we apply those going forward. When we look in further with this, you're going to see that we're moving to a cashless system with our Activities Department. Jeff Peterson, Jeff, you've made a lot of board meetings this year, but we got an opportunity to bring you in July as well.
He's seeking donations, I can tell him.
Yeah. But Jeff, Jeff did research with surrounding districts, and when we look at cash boxes, one, there's risk. And I feel like our staff has done a really nice job with it, but we don't want to deal with cash unless we really have to. And so dealing with that electronically is a more organized way and a more secure way for us to handle it. I think the second piece of it is there's a lot of time and energy that goes into creating cash boxes, recognizing them afterwards, depositing them. So there's a lot more steps along the way. And so Jeff has done research with surrounding districts about an implementation where we are not going to deny people coming to the game, but we're also in where we see things, it's switching to a cashless system. And so we feel like we have a place where how we can work with people that maybe aren't prepared to do that, but guiding them that we need to get there at the same time. And so.
My one question now was, and Jeff, you've maybe answered this, is just, I think if a kid coming to a basketball game or a football game or something, and mom or dad gives them five bucks, what do you do in those situations? Or what do other schools do in those situations?
Sure. You want me to come up?
That's okay.
No, it's great. You can just.
If he's here, we might as well bring him to the podium.
Now, I'm just, I guess, I'm just curious how you handle, and I'm old school, so, you know.
So thanks for having me. And I was just, as I was sitting there, I was like, wow, I've been here a lot. I told my wife on my way here today, I said, I think my first twenty-five years in education, I didn't make it to a board meeting. And the last five or so, I've been here a lot.
Means you're working hard.
Yeah, yeah. So thanks for having me.
You should have stacked them up at the end.
Yeah, for sure. So, so as Kevin said, did a lot of research with surrounding districts and found that many of them have moved. COVID, that's why we're here. Before COVID, no one did, was cashless. COVID occurred, you could only have a hundred and fifty people in your venue. And one of the ways that we monitored that was with electronic tickets. And when they were sold out, that was it. Venue was full. Since COVID, many people preferred the, the electronic option, and so we did kind of a hybrid. We, we had our cash box last year. We had a hundred and eighteen events where we created cash boxes. It's a lot of events. Then we had, as Kevin said, reconcile and deposit. Some of those went into the oh-one fund, some went into the oh-nine fund. Maybe Kathy's the only one here that fully understands that. But in our oh-one fund, we did over a hundred thousand in tickets, and twenty-eight thousand was electronic. So a little bit more than twenty-five percent of the people that were coming to our events chose to pay with cash. Some of our events, we just said, we're just, it's, we're cashless. Still, when people show up, you're like, yep, no problem. We'll take that five bucks and we put it in our. We still, we will still have a physical cash box, because you have programs, you have a card reader. This can scan, tap, everything. So we will still take cash. We're not going to turn anybody away. And we'll just say, hey, in the future, that's where we're going. Our, for our families, we've started to communicate that we are no longer having the physical pass card any longer. The pass card will be electronic. So you download the app for free, you store the electronic ticket in your app, and you come to the venue, and you pull the app up, and you pull up your ticket, and we scan it. It's no good. Now, somebody would say, well, can't they screenshot that, text it to their neighbor who's still in the parking lot? Yes, but once it's been scanned, it's no longer good for today. But it's a season pass, so at midnight, it refreshes. So all of our students who, this was an action item several years ago, where we moved towards students who register for a fall sport, receive a free season pass as part of their registration. Really wanted to promote involvement, especially right away in the beginning of the school year. And so we typically have between five and six hundred of our kids who are involved in an activity where they receive a free pass in the fall. So to answer your question, if a kid comes up, mom gave him five bucks, we're going to take the money and say, no problem, we'll put it in our cash box, and we'll work from there. Just as if somebody came up and said, oh, I forgot my wallet, I don't have my credit card, but I do have, I do have cash. Can I pay with cash? Yes. I don't, might not have the ability to make change, so we'll just send them to concessions and tell them to come back with the correct change. So we're going to work through those things as we get through there. We have awesome ticket takers. Chip, Chuck and Charlie, Chip retired last year. Chuck and Charlie still work, and they do a phenomenal job. But if you know those guys, like, this, this will be a little bit challenging for them, but they've done it. Because in the past, we didn't use this. We actually had a QR code.
So, but how, concessions will be this way too, though, right?
Concessions will still be cash.
Oh, they will. Okay. That's what I misunderstood.
Yeah, as we move towards our, our new concession stand, and as we get through all of that, there's some things that have to happen for us to be set up to be able to do that. And so that would be our, our transition plan for concessions would be when that construction work gets done and we move into our new concession stand. Out here, without internet, outside at Hattor Field, this will be a lot just with our ticket takers to be able to manage. So I'm going to guess, just say that those first couple of football games, we're probably still going to have legitimate cash boxes just to be ready with the volume and if technology doesn't really want to work when we have high volume.
So I think, I think the big thing we want to convey is we're, we're going to work with people in the transition, but we're definitely going to push the transition too. So as people, we're not going to turn away. We want people to come in. We're going to find a way to make that work. And I think Jeff has always been excellent at that, as the people that work with him. I, we need to push this direction, so gradually, we're going to remind them, next time we need to go. So they're not cut off guard, but also that it's not continually being used. And if there's legitimate concerns with people going forward, we'll, we'll try to listen to that and figure out a way how we can help them.
Jeff, is there a fee to use this type of service to do that? What type of percentages?
Yeah, so this, the company is called Bound. We've moved, moved towards them for our registration and some other, some transportation stuff. And it's kind of, they're a little bit more of a one-stop shop than us having this platform for this and this for that and that for this. So really like that about them. I believe they're the least expensive option. It's ninety cents a ticket. So the finance, seven-dollar ticket is seven ninety. And that cost is not on the district, it's on the user. So that's the one thing that sometimes people may be a little bit upset about, is that the ticket doesn't cost them seven dollars. It's going to cost them seven ninety.
But the, the way that the district would be working this is it's an eight-dollar ticket then. So you can choose. It's an expensive transaction. So whether you set your price there or you keep it lower, so knowing that they have another ninety cents, that part is equal.
So you advertise as an eight-dollar ticket. It's really, from their, from revenue perspective, it's seven, seven-ten or something like that?
And I think when you look at our ticket prices compared to other areas, we're going to show that we're, we're definitely in the market with them.
So does Bound, that's a bound terminal, handheld terminal, is that right?
Yeah.
And that accepts all the major credit cards, Apple Pay?
Don't know about Apple Pay. It's a good question.
Yep. Apple Pay, Venmo, those are things that we're going to need to eventually make a decision on as we go forward.
So students, really not worried about this with students so much, because when students come to concessions, they want to pay with Cash App, Apple Pay, Venmo. Anything but cash is what students want to use. The majority of students. That's from my experience, they're coming up with those ways of making payment instead of having cash. So, good question. I'll ask that. I don't know.
And I think that we, then, what about at the concession stands, we're accepting cash, but do those have registers that will accept credit cards and?
At the moment, concessions, yeah, concessions is just, it's just straight cash.
I think Jeff mentioned, as we look at our new concession design, that's a direction that we want to continue to move to be not handling.
So we did, we experimented a couple of times last year with a, with a platform that was all, all electronic for concessions. We still had the cash option. Surprisingly, it wasn't used as much as I thought it would be. I also, our prices were a little bit different on the electronic platform, because we don't like dealing with quarters of cash. It's one dollar, two dollars, or three dollars. Or we have a four dollar item.
I, I, that would be one bit of feedback for me is just, it's kind of odd to say you can't use cash at the gate, but you must use cash at concession.
Yeah, that's totally right. That's weird.
Yeah. And the, and, and we are moving, we're, we are, I promise you, that's the direction we're moving. It's just, we're not set up there yet to be able, to be able to do that.
So this platform fee, I mean, ninety-five cents, I mean, it's almost a buck. I mean, it's significant for a seven-dollar ticket, whatever, percent of it, anyway. And so that encompasses all these expenses. I mean, with credit cards, there's expenses involved. I mean, we don't, there's, there's no, that's all built into the system then. We're not going to incur any, nobody's going to incur any additional charges besides what this platform fee is going to be.
Correct. The district will, it won't cost the district anything.
So really, I mean, at the end here, this is really kind of a double nice thing for the district. I mean, it's not going to cost us anything, because the buyers are paying for it, and we're going to eliminate all this other labor-intensive liability issue with cash.
That, that part is nice. People also can buy season pass, so that's a way that you can deal without this. We offer the pass for our seniors so they can get their gold cards. So that's an offer for people to be able to attend. And students can get their pass either by participating or they can buy a pass. So there's, there's options of doing the passes here. For Westonka families, a lot of, a lot of families are going to get passes. It's when they bring outside family in, maybe for a game, or it is out-of-towners coming in, that that's going to be probably more where this transaction's happening. A lot of people that, you hit enough games, you look at the seniors and pass, and you're going to say, that's what we're going to do.
So we were talking concessions just at the football stand, but what about basketball, hockey, and all the other things?
Yeah, we're just not set up for it yet in there. Where hockey is not ours.
That's true, yeah.
But we're, we're just, I mean, I'm two years in the concessions. It's a bigger animal than, than I thought, and it's gone well.
You've done a really nice job.
Thank you. It's gone well, but we've been depositing a lot of money, cash, with concessions. I mean, we, we, rough number, we were plus twenty-five thousand last year. So, you know, that means we deposited probably fifty or sixty thousand in concessions. So it's a lot, and it's a lot to navigate and process and work through.
But I, I think, Jeff, what we're hearing from several board members is being consistent is something that we should be looking at, which I think you said at presenting, that that is the direction. It's just, we need some more time to get there for concessions.
Do you have a feel on the timeline for the concessions?
Well, part of it is, is Bound isn't set up for it yet. They're, so they're working on that. They're working on creating an option for concessions. So I, you know, it's a software developer, so who knows? It could be done tomorrow. It could be done in two years. Personally, I'd like to be done as we be ready to do that. If they can't do it, we'll find another way of doing it.
But the other districts are doing this already, you're saying?
Some, some are doing it for their concessions, but the more are doing it for tickets. We would be only the second school in our conference to go cashless. And New London Spicer, which is way, way, way out.
For tickets.
Yeah, they've been cashless for tickets for two years.
So our conference, no, but our neighbors, yes. So. So, most of our neighboring districts are in a different conference and so there's.
So, so schools that are, Orano, Wacoña, Chaska Chan, St. Louis Park.
Minnetonka.
I believe, yeah, Minnetonka, Wazatta, Nine Eight Prairie, uh, New Prague is maybe getting there. So, um, you know, we're on the, we're on the eastern side of the conference, so it's a little bit different. As Kevin said, and as some of the other activities directors mentioned, is that, um, their families are fine. It's the, it's the families coming in. And so I assured Kevin that when I send out communication welcoming, um, Delano to come over here and, and compete against us in any activity, I tell them, previously, I'd say we're five and seven dollars cash, or for those who want the online option, here's the, the link to purchase tickets. While that communication would say, we are cashless, please purchase tickets ahead of time or be prepared at the gate to, uh, purchase tickets.
Yeah, and that's where I think the confusion can be.
Right, I agree, yeah.
We're cashless over here, but we're only cash over here.
Well, I don't, I won't, I won't communicate that. The communication will just simply be.
Right, but that expectation that they might have is, okay, then they're cashless, I'll bring my credit card for everything.
Maybe.
Then they can't get a hot dog, which is fine.
And I, and I would, I let them into the game for free, but I will not give them a free hot dog. It wouldn't stop them from getting into the game, but no.
So here's, here's really our options though, if that's, if, and this is why we bring, the reason why this is a board agenda item, isn't that we need board approval to go cashless. We know that there's shifts and it's how people engage with us. So we appreciate your, your ideas, because we want to represent our community well, and we also want to take the next steps. We can't, we can't package this together at this time. And so an option is, we wait and we keep on doing cash boxes. Or we do this as the first step and then go the next. I do believe it's going to take a little bit of transition. And so to get going, it's. It's, it's the beginning.
Just so you know, I haven't carried cash for years, so I'm all for this.
Yes, that's how I feel too.
But I'm also all for the concession thing. And my advice, because I have some background in this area, is let's have, there's a hundred and one vendors out there that would do concession, you know, terminals, you know. Maybe, maybe we shouldn't wait for Bound to catch up.
So we can, we'd be happy to explore, uh, that next step. But the action item today would be just on tickets. And so we, we can hear your words and we can appreciate what you're saying of, can that be an option? I think, I also know, uh, Jeff working, working the concession booth. Once you do that and you understand the flow and the volume and the different issues, uh, he'll be an active participant of trying to figure out how that next step can be taken.
So, sometimes cash is faster, sometimes. And so, I would say especially in concessions, it's, it's.
But you get at the twenty percent tip thing that they always make us do now?
Yeah. Just around that.
Jeff, is our wifi system is strong enough and good enough to do this? Because if you're at a football game, which is the cash cow around here, right? And wifi goes down and you can't be doing this and whatever, you could lose a substantial amount of money one night.
You could if, so this, there is no internet at our ti, current ticket setup out here. In our new setup, hopefully that's, we've got internet in there. But currently out here, we don't have that. And so we would be using a hotspot for games. But the other option is, is the QR code. So you don't need, you don't need this. And we, we've done it already, just simply with the QR code is, you're walking up to the ticket area, you've got signage saying, hey, get your tickets here. And people are walking by and clicking it. And by the time they get to the front gate, they've already, they've already got.
Because they'll still be using this field some too, so we need that.
And as I said, for sure, at least the first couple of football games, we're going to have eight. So on a, on a Friday night football game, we have four cash boxes. It's a lot. And, and, um, so you think about the risk about having people carry those cash boxes, you know, back to the office at night and those kinds of things. We're a good place, nothing's happened, but, um, you know, with, we would probably have one for sure at football, just to be able to say, okay, yep, we've, we're able to keep things going for those of you who can't use the QR code. So we'd still have a QR code. This, we did not use at all last year, Cory. I'd be lying if I said Cory was excited about this. He's not here, but Cory and I have met. We actually have not used this for a game, but I'm excited to try it. But Cory's aware that this action item was going to be here today, so he's not going to.
And why is he, it's just more, does he see this more like?
It's, it's security, it's security.
Although we just announced to the whole public where all the cash is kept.
I gotta take a different.
In line with the cash cow.
I gotta take a different route back.
People walking by themselves with big boxes.
They're all marked with.
So, so we should be good, I'm not sure, Gary, did you ask that question? We should be good, okay, should be good, at least inside.
No, I wasn't trying to be, I just, you know, I hate to have us lose a bunch of revenue at football games.
So with, with change, we know that we have to over-prepare for this and we also know we need to have backups for this. I don't want to make this sound like it's, you know, cutting edge, there's a lot of people that have gone this way. But it's change and there's different hurdles that we're going to have to get past. I think one of the things that we're insistent on in this transition, we do, we want to work with people that they can get into the games and we're going to give them different opportunities. Gradually, that's going to funnel into, this is the way things are going to work. And I think it's going to be a good thing for our district from an efficiency standpoint and also, uh, from a standpoint of security. That, that also being said, um, I think there's a lot of ways for our families to do this other than just this, which is, look at the season pass. And if you're going to go to X number of games, that's going to be a good option for you. Then for our seniors, make sure you get the gold pass because you get in for free. And so I think Jeff also has the game of the week, which students get in free with their ID for those. And so there's a lot of ways for kids to participate. And we, we want the stands full, so Jeff has been good about trying to figure out ways that people can get in there where we take away limitations.
Jeff, are, are the student passes and the parent and senior passes, are they all under the umbrella of the, uh, platform we're working with now?
Moving into the twenty-four, twenty-five academic school year, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Previously, so the only thing that would still be an actual card would be the, the gold card. CC two and over.
Or student IDs.
Or, yeah, or a student ID for the end of the week. Or sometimes there's different passes, that conference pass, coaches' association passes. There's a lot of different passes that people walk up and show your ticket taker and.
But the mechanics of us being going and buying a season pass is pretty much going to be the same platform that you're working with now for the.
Correct, exactly the same.
I, I really appreciate your input, I appreciate the piece on, um, the piece on concessions. And, um, Ryan, I think that would be a conversation we'd love to have, just with your experience of it, just so we can, I think, about making sure we do that right. I think when it comes to fees that are attached to this, we're mindful of where we set our base rate so that we, we know that someone's, it's not seven, it's seven ninety. So as we compare ourselves to others, that we always look at that fully loaded versus, uh, just what we're taking in and not account for the other. And I think that's how we'll continue to calculate it. We can appreciate that some people would rather just pay the district than that fee, but there's a lot of value to us of, you look at the time, a lot of our events, if you take volleyball, basketball, whatnot, you don't have a huge gate for that, but you still go through the whole mechanics of that box and the amount of time that takes versus this dollar ninety, it's going to, that's going to probably save us some money.
Yeah, do you know how, uh, do you have a good guess at what it will cost, how many ninety cents it'll be?
Well, um, I, I think it was in the, the action item from just last year. I thought it was around four thousand that was paid in.
To Bound.
To Bound. And that was about twenty-five percent of our, um, transactions, so sixteen thousand, fifteen, sixteen thousand to Bound.
Do we have to go through a formal renewal of with Bound every year, or are we just, we can spark ways anytime we wish?
Yeah, so it's, um, really good question. It's free, the website, everything is free, all, what they want, they make their money on the, the transactions. So, um, moving towards going with them for most everything, we will save considerable money in the department. With some other things that we're paying for, uh, that are just one-offs, separate one-offs, our transportation, our sports engine website. A lot of different things where, where we're paying because we want that piece, but they can't do some other things. Where Bound is able to do more, um, more things for us. It's more of a one-stop shop for us in the department and for our staff. When they're going in to look for something, they're going to one place, not two or three to, to find information, so. So from an efficiency perspective, a couple of years from now, it could be really good. In Iowa, so Bound is, um, they're not big in Minnesota at the time, they, they're going to get bigger. They are, they, they run Iowa for everything, they run Ohio. So they've taken over, they're trying to get to the state high school league so they can get their platform in front of them so it's used for more, um, more things in Minnesota. So they presented to our conference and other conferences and some schools have went with them for their registration like we have. And, um, some are with the ticketing. What would be nice and what we attempted to do as a conference was to go to our, um, conference and say, hey, let's all use the same platform. So when I go to Holy Family, I'm using Bound. When I go to Delano, I'm using Bound. There's many, many, many platforms. And so it can be frustrating for fans as they're coming up, they think they got to download one more thing. They've got to, oh my goodness, I've never done Hometown or Go Fan or Tickets Spice, or all these different platforms. So we attempted to do that, not everyone got on board with that in our conference, but many did. So for those of us that did, it'll look same similar to, you know, for our families when they go to Delano and when they come over here, it'll look same similar, um, for us.
I will say, I tried to follow your directions to get my season pass in the Bound app.
Did you get it?
I did not figure it out, I had to do the screen capture thing that you said in the email.
Okay.
So I was a little bit like, hmm.
I would have tempted it again.
Well, Claire did the screen capture, I did the other one, so hers must be better.
I'll just give it to my kids.
Yeah, thank you for.
Yes, thanks, thanks for having me.
Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to discussion items. Discussion item seven A, chair moves for approval of action item seven A, approval of long-term facilities revenue for intermediate district two eighty-seven. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item seven B, approval of the ten-year LTFM expenditure projections and a statement of assurances. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item seven C, approval of cashless transactions for all Mount West Tonka High School activities, department tickets and department tickets. Is there any discussion on that? Are you guys all good? All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item seventy, approval of items to be sold at auction. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item seventy, approval of twenty-four to twenty-six contract between the educational office employees and school board of independent school district number two seventy-seven. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other topics for anybody? Not, um, I just want to take a second and tell every, all the board members here how proud I am, how everybody's been working on this committee stuff and that, because things are flowing really well. I know there's a lot of extra work going on with the bond things and branding and all this sort of stuff. So thank everybody for all their, for all their effort. So, can I get a second for a German?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good one, guys, see you next month, or sooner.